Once again, this is Patterson Recreation Summer Camp 2016. Cruising into summer fun. As you can see, our kids are really, really enjoying themselves on this hot summer day. Enjoying, enjoying, enjoying.
That they've got this and can do whatever they want to do. And one of you has a responsibility. Because we're depending on you, since you see all of the paperwork. We don't see it, we just see the cuts. We don't see what you see. Councilman, Council President, Councilman Morris, who knows numbers? Come on, we gotta deal with these numbers! And the numbers of children that are gonna be on the street? Those are the numbers we gotta start with. Now, we're not playing. We're not here to make a point today. We're here to say we are here for the long haul. Because our children need more than us. That anyone says that they're gonna put them on. So I'm asking you all to do what you know you can do. And I know you can do it. Because you've done it before. So let's roll the clock, Steve, that we have to be here all night so big. But we're depending on you to do what we know you can do. And as Malcolm always said, "I don't think it's necessary."
Good evening. Uh, Council, first, um, really come back, um, be here today, um, to support our young people. Um, it's no personal attack on any position, the mayor, business administrator, city councilor, or all. I think I've had a conversation with each, since we found out about these cuts last Wednesday. Quite a few council members, you've had conversations about what's going on. Um, the one thing I really wanted to bring to light was the misconception that recreation does not raise their own money. Um, I've been the division of recreation director since 1998. And during that period of time, I can honestly say that we've raised millions of dollars. Millions of dollars. And I can start off by beginning in some of the partnerships and the things that we have going on. One is the partnership with the Patterson Public Schools, which allows me to serve as the recreation director. It's a saving, close to 1.6 million dollars like you. We have no fees that are being charged for us by Patterson Public Schools for the facilities, for security, or for custodians through the collaboration that was signed, uh, the collaboration that began in 1998. We also have collaboration with, I would say, making four or five churches, and I heard somebody saying like that, that we use their sites for recreation already. We also have a collaboration with the housing authority. And all of these collaborations have been going on for years, so this is not new stuff. And, um, when I came back today, uh, division report, I know you've seen, I give important reports on different things. I know there are different people. But I wanted to make sure it was clear that, you know, um, you know, I'm glad that people have stepped forward and wanted to give donations. And, um, I, I thank, um, Mr. Florio, Detective Developer, and Councilman Sayah, wherever else we have given donation. But I don't know if this is the right way to go when it comes to really take care of the budget of recreation. My concern is, if this money disappears now, will we be able to manage it? I don't think any type of downsides is the answer. Meaning, you know, um, cutting back hours or cutting back staff. I don't want to get personally, last I could tell, thirty kids, how do you pick thirty kids? You thirty kids are going home now, on, on the twelve, the other seventy are gonna stay out. Um, there have been so many valid points here this evening, but the real issue is, is that we have to look at it. And I would say nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, the recreation budget was almost a hundred percent more. The recreation full-time staff was almost a hundred percent more. We had sixteen full-time people, we're down to eight full-time people now. My position is paid by the Patterson Public Schools, which over the duration of this eighteen-year period, is a saving of 1.4 million dollars during the time that I've been the recreation director. So you had that, 1.5 each year, and of course, other cities, they have to pay to use their public schools to go in and use their stuff. I've, I've told the people about this, so it's not a, a new thing. But I want you to look at some of this and look at the savings. Our AAU basketball team, because I see some of the coaches here, they are scrambling. Like, our kids have been to Maryland, Virginia, North Carolina, Las Vegas, and they raised that money on their own. Our Little League football teams travel all up and down here. You see them hustling out on the corners, doing what they gotta do. They pay for theirselves their own. We equip one kid, example, Little League football, it costs almost three hundred dollars for one kid to get dressed. The city of Patterson, all we do is provide the cleaning of the helmets and shoulder pads and give them that. Otherwise, they raise the money for everything. So I don't want anybody on the outside looking in thinking, "Derek Patterson paid him for stuff." We're not paying him for anything. This is something that we deserve. This is what we deserve. If you turn to the fourth page, you look at the participation numbers. Recreation, as stated before, is just not about kids. We have a senior citizen program where the annual benefit works on the bus plan itself with senior disabled people. As of August twelfth, the annual benefit will be laid off, and our senior program will end. We have nobody else on the map. These are part-time employees. There are fifty-five part-time employees, as we've talked, that will lose their job outside of just the summer camps. We have a boxing gym that people, you know, understand, we have boxing every day of the week in Patterson that is supported through recreation. We have a senior citizen knitting crochet program, supported through the Division of Recreation. We have a fitness program that operates four days a week throughout various sites in the city of Patterson that goes through recreation. All of this stops. When football season starts, I will not have a staff to put that barley field or anywhere to help me out with football, because they're all part-time staff. When you talk about basketball season, we have probably the biggest basketball league in the state of New Jersey. Anywhere in the world. We will not be the main site, because you cannot have basketball without any supervision. There is no way we can do it. If you look at one thing, the Division of Recreation, we operate after-school and our weekends most of the time. Our line item for overtime is under one thousand dollars. Our ice room, where creative shift, do what they, the guys do, they cover, the majority of our staff is part-time. We haven't had a program coordinated since two thousand and six. So not only do I do the directing, I also do a program for a native part-time staff. So, I mean, I just implore you to come together as a, as a team. This is not about anybody, you know, going out on their own, and, like I said, no disrespect to you, Councilman Sayah, I think GoFundMe is a good thing. But I've really thought about, I mean, I do not, I mean, we're all proud of Patterson. Like, we should be, you know, if anything we give in a GoFundMe is a plus, that GoFundMe should be for the trip, for the kids who won the AAU championship or something else. But to get the basic things here, as in Patterson, we cannot do it. And I told the reporters the other day when they came in, the one thing you can't take for granted, because some people do it, is when they come to our camps, they get a breakfast and a lunch every day. Every Friday, with four hundred kids from the first ward, fourth ward, to fifth ward, get to take home two breakfasts and two lunches over the weekend because of Patterson Task Force and the work of Patterson. You will be surprised how many kids do not have something to eat when they wake up in the morning. Or do they not have anything to eat? All I can say is that everybody in here has a heart. And, and your heart has to be broken that we're even having this discussion. I don't care who doesn't like what I have to say. This is not grandstanding, this is nothing else. These are kids that I've been working with forever. I started coaching when I was eighteen years old with Patterson Task Force to earn the grades. And you're talking about now, I'm fifty-one years old. Thirty-three years later, I'm still in the city of Patterson. Like Charles Frye said, "When I came home, Ernie Green hired me in the summer." I worked at Elio's de Rio's on Park Avenue, the summer camp council. Then I worked at Calvary. That little bit of money used to be my money to get back to school. Now, I know there's big deals, and I'm not gonna be able to help make their family pay rent, or pay gas, or get back to school clothes, or even pay their tuition. Think about that one-week kind of salary. If you look at the numbers, I keep saying it's .1%, we're cutting every year. We went from twenty-two after-school evening sites down to seven sites now. So Russ can do the numbers for you. The lead that council has got from seven hundred thousand to maybe three hundred thousand. Almost every town, this summer, we already cut two hundred thousand dollars from the camp before they could start. We took two hundred thousand dollars from them. The night opened up the first week when they were supposed to open up, we opened up July the fifth. So, I mean, you look at what happened back in two thousand. There was a visiting family here on Governor Street. A young man goes out on a fire hydrant. They crack the fire hydrant, the fire hydrant pressure knocks him to the street, he gets killed on the bike ride. There would be, this, I mean, if we get the weather that we've had now, and these pools are not open as an outage, we are opening ourselves up for disasters. All, all I can do, and close to say, is that I'm, I'm here to work with everybody to make this work. And I can guarantee you that it's not about anybody looking for handouts. Every year, our division, I can guarantee you, brings in over a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in donations. So there are still good businesses in this community. There are still good churches in this community, and there are still good people in this community. Anybody who says that we don't stand up and fight for our kids, they need to come out to Little League basketball, Little League football, come out to a summer camp site. If you come to that pool tomorrow when it's ninety-five degrees, you think they're at Point Pleasant? That's not even where I live. This is their, this is their vacation. So, I mean, I, I thank you, Council President, for taking my call the other night and talking to you. And I thank you really also, as a father of four. I mean, I understand as a parent, we cannot raise our kids out of home. I can't thank the coaches in the city of Patterson and the teachers and the camp council for what they did for my kids. I mean, they literally, some of my kids have great relationship with these guys who've taken care of them over the years. And it's bigger than just maybe that three hundred dollar paycheck that they get for every two weeks. It's about relationships, it's about building a community, it's about our people. If we continue to turn our kids away, our community will just become a disaster. We need to make sure those kids that go to Rutgers and that go to Howard and go to Florida, that they come back here and build their community, and not only they build their community, that they're welcome back in our community. Prince said it. They've been booed on us every time. They've been running around about some Fettie Wacht, and right behind Fettie Wacht is a twenty million dollar country school district that everybody's had. Now, they've heard about Fettie Wacht and this other stuff, and Principal Moody, and two days later, in the newspaper, there's a twenty million dollar cut. So the combination of what they're doing in this school district and messing with our people, like, we have to make sure the Zatides, the Jalen Vines, the Rayvines, all the people that are here in our youth that went away and came back, that they continue to do it, and next generation continues to do it. So all I ask is that, please, please, let's not have disaster. We do not need to have a march or rally for anybody else that's gonna be killed or murdered, sentenced, slayed on the street because they didn't have the proper supervision, that they're illegal guns on their street, that they think summer harrowing is a profession that they can live by. So if we have control over them, so let's continue to fight for train. God bless you.
We certainly hear your, your words, more important it would be if you see your heart and your commitment. Your echo, um, I think, with many in this community recognizing that this is more than just dollars and cents. These are lives that we're talking about, and, and it's our future. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna terminate your, if you're gonna eat the seeds, you'll never be able to reap our harvest. So, so we need to, we need to recognize that and know what it is that we're doing. I think I'm gonna stop midway and allow the council members that have been chomping at the bit to comment, and each of them, I'll give a brief comment, and it will to you while you're here. We have said it often, um, the council, the taxpayers simply are tapped at. Not the supermarket, all I have is my property is a hundred dollars. I can't take out a hundred and twenty dollars for the food. But I need to prioritize all that hundred dollars, what it is I'm gonna take home. And I have to take something off to feed my family. We have to limit it on budget, but we certainly not intended to sacrifice our children in that process. I'm gonna shoot the tide tonight, but I wasn't born this way. And I've known how to see food on the table with eight people around the table, knowing you can only feed six. And the kids are gonna eat first, and the adults are gonna wait to see what they can do. As adults, we need the first part of business is to take care of our children.
We have to take care of our children. And that's, I've been volunteering for years, thirty-five years ago, in the schools. And I always say that we have to look out for each other's children. And like Benji literally said, it's something that, everyone is taking care of everyone's children. And that's what we need to do. I, I'm not the mayor, I personally would have not come after the recreation budget. I would have looked somewhere else, because it is so important. But what I see here tonight is that you have sent a clear message. And you have sent a clear message that you are not gonna take away from our children. And I had a conversation, uh, with our BA, and I said, "We have children that cannot go to Wildwood, that cannot go to Seaside Heights, cannot go to Point Pleasant. They cannot go down there and enjoy the beach. They need the pools, they need those sites to come in and enjoy. They're getting breakfast, they're getting lunch." You go to some of these children's houses, they have no food in the refrigerator, they have no food. Until you walk these streets, until you see what's out there, a lot of people are really suffering. And I say, "We, and these kids need this little bit of money to go back to school or to buy clothes for school." This is so important, and I commend all of you for coming out here tonight. Because I always say, like, I remember the National Council of Legal Women, and they said, "We have to take care of our children." There's a person, I'm, yes, we have to take care of our children. And I say again, it's gonna be you, because your children can't fight for themselves. You have to be the one to fight for them. You are there fighting, and you have to do that. And I wanna commend all of you, and we all need to look out for each other. If I can help you out, that's what I'm supposed to do. If I got extra food in my refrigerator, that's what I'm supposed to do. I'm supposed to do things like that. I'm supposed to help you out, and you call me and you ask me. So the message has been sent. And it's up to the mayor now to see what he needs to do. The message has been sent, and I thank you all. I thank you, I'm happy that you're here, I thank you all for coming out. The Seven No Runway and all of those, thank you, you have cared for this community for such a long time. And we all have cared, and we all do different things different ways. But one thing we must remember, with my Jamie flame and the jumpstart, I remember with kids with special needs, we weren't looking after special needs, but we must, we must, as a community, take care of our children, and we must look out for each other. And I applaud all of you for coming out here tonight, taking up and fighting for us. Thank you so much, thank you, Council President.
When we, um, when we sent all of the council members the message that you were called and, and told, not asked, but told, that your programs were going to be cut, I sent you a message, and I said to you, "We will not tolerate that." Our children are our future. And I understand that when we look at the entire budget and understanding that this tax levy, we have sent the council that we are not going to increase this tax levy, that the administration is in charge and seeking to cut where they need to cut. But definitely, we won't tolerate it. And I said to you that I was gonna be specifically asking for all of the others, the same way they told you what was being cut in your program, I wanna see every other line item and court department and what else is being cut before our children are cut from, because this, they are our future. They are our future, they are our future. I understand the whole summer program, coming back home from college and to look for a job and not have a job, and think about, "What am I gonna do when school starts again? How am I gonna take food back to school? How am I gonna take clothes back to school? How I'm gonna pay for my clothes?" I understand all of that. And I was so disheartened, and so hurt, and upset. And I want you to know that today, we had a committee, a DPW committee meeting. There's a lot of stuff that unfortunately, we can't, um, put out without getting all of the full details. But there's one thing that was said, we discussed the overtime. But we also discussed how many positions at DPW are not filled. If I tell you the number of the positions, that the money is there, but the positions are not filled, that is one of the reasons why there are other staff, and they do have to do some overtime. Well, I don't, I wouldn't get into the numbers, but I will say this. You want to know the numbers? We went to a thirty-four positions at DPW are not filled. And if we went to, and, is, the money...
We don't wanna drift off, so...
Right, I don't, I don't wanna, but what I wanted to say is, when we look at that budget, I said, when we look at that budget and we see that those positions are not filled, the money is here. So there is no reason why that .1% should be cut, because the money is actually in the budget. So I will be, I will not be supporting anything that cuts our revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Well, first of all, I'll say this. The council has heard echoes and sentiment of the community loud and clear. From the hilltops to the Garrett Heights, to all of the, uh, businesses that have had to endure tax increases. When we look at, due to the refound, the tax rate, which once was 1.8, roughly 1.8%, was saw an increase to 4.1 semi-percent, that's a substantial increase. So it was a heavy burden that the entire community had to live. Due to many, many years of poor management, I'm not pointing the finger at, of anyone now. I can say that since we've been there now, everyone has been working diligently to make sure that we do the right thing by the community. But due to many, many years, there was a twenty-seven payment that wasn't anticipated every eleven years, this twenty-seven payment, when this we did contracts that increased, you know, the budget, it was considerable amount. There was less than two-tenths of a percent raise. So the first night, the entire council voted it down, and I was one of those, one of those that voted it down. Then after having an opportunity to sit for a Friday's committee meeting and have a clear understanding of the numbers, as Mr. Muhammad said, I realized that we also have to understand that due to all of the services that we do have, where are we gonna realize these cuts? So I was asked, after last week's meeting, Director, can you close that door, please? I was asked after last week's meeting, "Did I feel lonely?" And I said, "Absolutely not." Because it is each of our jobs to do an assessment and make an, make an intelligent decision on how we choose to vote. And I knew and I anticipated that something like this was gonna happen. Where are we gonna cut? Are we gonna cut Police Department, are we gonna cut Fire Department? The least likely, they're not, we're not gonna be able to cut a full-time position, because we still gotta pay them this workers' compensation that I paid, uh, 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 to pay them to the, uh, the unemployment. But understanding that it's a tough task. So what I wanted to say and urge you guys tonight, this is, this is collaborative effort that needs to take place. I've been saying it for quite some time. We've been imposed upon, and now, we're here fighting each other. We're forced to put the council against the administration. Administration against the public, public against, against the council. But yet, our governor's been very irresponsible. Our governor, after losing a suit, has told Patterson, "I don't care what the judge said. I'm not paying, we don't have the money." But yet, still, I asked our legal department two weeks ago, "Why do we have to pay a bill that's been incumbent upon us by the county when we don't have the money? Why can't we enact the same rights that the governor enacted upon us? Why do we cough up the money anytime the county gives us an increase, which was a six million dollar increase by the way this year? Patterson Public Schools, Commissioner Irving, was forced because of the direction of a state-appointed superintendent to increase our budget by 1.2, by two million dollars. So that's a collective seven million dollars, and this administration still imposes a seven million dollar cut, which wasn't enough. We still was gonna see an increase, a very small-minded increase, that this council said based upon the outcribs of the community they refused to do. So I will implore you, we have a state representative, a man who fights on behalf of our community, which we see. We all gathered together and sponsored buses to go down and support his efforts. A few months ago, we had to send two buses back, because we didn't have enough people to sell these buses. You know, when I, when I think about the Patterson that I'm proud of, when I think about playing for Marty Barnes, when I think about my father, who played for New Jersey Bank Shorties, when I think about all of the sponsorship that used to pour into this community, and I understand, even as a business owner, my contribution. But how about all of those businesses? Like the owner of Popeyes in the corner, or the owner of the building where Popeyes is on the corner, Memorial Drive and Market Street, that towed ten to fifteen cars a day of our community members illegally out of our town. When are we, the community, gonna stand forward for what's deservedly obvious? They don't sponsor any programs in our recreational teams. We don't have businesses that afford the way they used to. What they do is now they impose themselves and tow cars illegally and, and, and make citizens who already live check-to-check scrubbed even more by illegally towing cars. So when are you, I ask you, when are we gonna stand together and stop having the council fight against the administration? Having the public fight against the council? When are we gonna stand hard together? And we still have those buses, I'm sure, right, Mr. Rucker? I'm sure we can, we can have buses going to the State House this, next week, where we allow the governor to understand that our community is tired of him pushing us around. That's what it's gonna take. This budget, there's not much movement, there's not much meat left in it. We cut to the bone already. Three hundred thousand dollars cut. This twenty-five thousand, uh, households or, or facilities that pay into the budget. When you do the math on that, that's twelve dollars per household. We can't sacrifice twelve dollars per household? How much more do you think we're gonna have to pay into the Patterson Police Department when we have all these kids on the street finding something else to do because they don't have recreation? So yes, there are people here who understand the numbers. We have to understand that the next few years, it's gonna be a challenging task. And we're gonna have to be willing to bite the rag a little bit. Twelve thousand a household, I think that's a small sacrifice that we should have been willing to make. But this council spoke, because the council hears the outcribs of the community. Now we're here in the middle of the direction, and I urge you all, please, you understand, you understand, it's a very delicate balancing act. But we have to stand forward in, in areas where we're being mistreated. This governor and this state government has overlooked us in the management. We have institutions like, like Eva's Village, that has four hundred beds and yet has five tenters designated for Patterson. Assemblymen, we have said before, as being the city of management, we take care of everybody else's problems. You see it on our streets now. Our streets are dirty, because people come into our community and they dump on our streets. So I'll leave it at that, and understand that it is a challenging effort that needs to take place, but we need the community to support. We need the community to be willing to engage as one. And make sure this governor understands that we're not gonna stand idle. And don't just take it out on your local representatives, but make sure this next governor's race, we stand out and vote when necessary as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. We as a council do not tell the mayor where to cut the budget. The admini- administration decide was the higher priority of the budget. I'm a big supporter of recreation. I'm not just a sponsor of fifteen things for the city, I'm doing the same thing as this year. But I'm a physically responsible person for last decade, our taxpayer be part of. But I believe the administration do not need to cut recreation where there is less than one person. So I believe, I'm, I'm a, once again, I'm a big supporter of recreation. I think the admini- administration should look elsewhere to cut. I think the admini- administration should look elsewhere to cut.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, Patterson. Um, we just tried to call it like this. I believe that this is a political game from the administration. Uh, I call it, you know, I put it, uh, the community against this governing body. This is, is a shame and is sad that the administration is using our children for a political game. Because that's, that, that's what it is. We recommend the administration to cut the budget. And then jump, uh, and then went, uh, straight through there to recreation. Without even knowing in the beginning how much will be the saving. So I tell you, uh, that's a clear mess. I, I think that, uh, uh, you know, we have to come together in this. For, for, for very long time, I've been talking about shared services agreement, but there's a lack of leadership. And, and since last year, I've been speaking about when they counter the budget, all those vacant positions that they have in the budget. To, after we approve the budget, ship the money to another line item. They use the money to something else. And that's something that I'm proud to see this governing body making that, putting that decision. Because for the past eight years, our ta- our taxpayers are been getting hit with tax increases. And not only the homeowner, the rent, once, once the, 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 the taxing, our constituent receiving tax increase, the rent go out, and, and everybody's suffering. Now, one thing that called my attention is that why the administration haven't paid attention to those positions? Let me give you a clear example. That the budget officer is retired, I was suing. Because that position is being posted from over there, right? Look at other cities. Many other cities, they don't even use a budget officer. Not even the county that have a, a high budget. They don't use a budget officer. The way they put their budgets together is the CFO in combination, in combination with the administration and the department head. Guess what? That's one position that we could eliminate. And we will be saving over $100,000 right there without giving any layoff. We have to look at those positions. Because for many years, we've been receiving irresponsible budget, overstated budget. And we have to say yes, because well, there's decision. You know what? Guess what? The time is up. It's not that administration have to do their job. They are in a position of power to do that job. So they gotta look those positions. And it's a shame that if we straight to recreation, to hurt our children. Because that's what it is. We gotta go like this. And we ready, I'm ready to have this conversation. I'm a father of three children, attending a high school. And, and I'm ready. I live here. And, and, and I'm, and we're in the same position, we're in the same page. But we gotta have a serious conversation. Let's get back to the issue, let's get back to the topic. As councilman, commissioner, as I mentioned before, since I was at the bottom of the case, I've been speaking about shared services agreement. After the last storm, I tried to put that situation together with the board of eight and, and, and the DPW committee to talk about an effective shared services agreement when it comes to lobbying with the county and with the city and the school board. It was impossible. There's a lack of leadership. And the county, they have a very effective shared services agreement with Mayor and the city. And there's a lot of money that they're saving in so many different ways. Because they doing more than what they have. So they utilizing the resources that they have. And that's why we have to start doing. But let me tell you this. There, there's a very minimal information that we received some time. And we have to request, we have to do an offer request. So that, uh, one thing that I would like to recommend, and I've been thinking about this for, for, for a couple hours. And let's do, just let's do an offer request and see all the salary increase since this administration took charges. Let's do that. Let's, let's take a look at all those salary increase. And let's talk about that topic. Let's talk about that position. Want that position? Why we advertising that position? When we can, when we really need that position? And if you know that we don't need it? Because if the county doesn't have a, a budget officer, why we need to have it? And many of the municipalities, what they do is that CFO, the administration, and the department head, they put the budget together, we sit down, and we get the job done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Moore?
Through the chair to the budget officer. For the remainder of the year, what was the amount of money that the administration anticipated saving for our economy due to the recreation, what was the dollar amount?
I did not work up that number, but I did, the mayor just had the number. But I did a preliminary number on my own today. And I figured it's probably worth about $350,000.
$350,000, what, what activities?
Well, the way I did that, Councilman, I took the number of days that we have for the summer program. And I took how many days that the summer program would be reduced by. And I came up with a percentage. And I used that percentage against the summer salaries. And coming up with that percentage, it was about 34% of the days we would stay against 65 or 66% that we would use. And that's how I came up with the dollar figure for the salaries. I took nothing out of OE, because I don't know what the commitments are in OE and what we may, may have expensed in OE. Now, I just did that on my own. The mayor had so many, other people worked on this. And I don't know what they came up with. But you would have to, uh, ask, uh, I don't know. I don't know if somebody knows. But again, the mayor has a guy with this number. Nobody has this number but myself. And I just worked it up before I came up here tonight. And again, the mayor has his own number, but I don't, you know, he weren't there with any of these guys.
Why did he say? The actual anticipated savings from reducing the programs from year to date is about $350,000.
And that would be my projection, Councilman.
Director? With regard to the money item, the, the, of the pools, of the resources need to run those pools, would they already previously purchased?
Yeah, there's already a contract, please, the chemicals, everything. So I mean, you can't retract that, so those, that's already paid.
Well, yeah, that was part of the plan, I was making that. Many of the costs associated with running the pools have already been incurred. So there's really no savings why shut it down.
Well, the staff, they would save the money if I cut the staff.
How many staff members are there?
There's approximately 140 staff members in total.
120, what is it? 140?
Yes.
And the average salary?
Uh, average salary is around 10.25.
So from this point in time, the end of season, will it be totaled out? Do you know that offer?
It totaled out. My, my, my number is, is that I think by closing the pool, you'd probably save around $150,000.
That could very well be counted. I took the whole summer program and he has a budget off, and that's how I came up with it.
The pools would go to, um, uh, labor. So the pools were re-budgeted and went to labor. Now, once the, once the camp closed, we don't open up till 12 o'clock anymore. So that's the savings that we already built in when I did the budget. So the total savings could actually be under $150,000.
My point is, I'm really thinking is, um, I know, I don't like to waste people's time with platitudes and long speeches. I like to get right to the numbers and look at a solution. The issue is, is that the mayor and his administration put forth a budget for the council to vote either up or down. The power that the council has is to begin to reallocating line items to other line items, therefore reallocating line items to support these numbers here, which I wanted to determine what those numbers were. If the mayor doesn't agree with that, the council would just simply vote down that particular budget. If we agree with it, we vote it up. That's the power we simply have. We just spent all evening talking, talking about who should do what. But at the end of the day, every day we spend wasting time talking about who should do what is a day that our kids wanted. Thank you, Councilman.
A budget should be based on priorities. And there's no greater priority than our children. And the only cut that has been proposed up until this point has been recreation and the number of priority patterns, our youth. Years past, Director, you and I have discussed applying for community development block grant funding. And you did, and you practically did. It was over $400,000. Through the chair, the director, was that money ever drawn down for the purpose of recreation? It was reallocated. So there's $400,000 that was reallocated by the administration, in all fairness. You were encouraged to apply for this grant by the Department of Community Affairs, and you did. And it was reallocated. And that's what you did use at this juncture. One of the reasons why I started is both funding campaign is because many people outside Patterson want to help. Because they care about our children. They don't just have to live here, care about children, know that summer is precious. And there's not much summer left as it is. And you don't want to take away the summer from our children that gave the most at this juncture in our city's history. And one thing I was doing as far as the numbers that Kevin Womble cited are salaries. I was calculating salaries. And let's say, for instance, if I propose a 10% cut in salaries across the board in addition to positions that are non-essential to be eliminated. So if you were to take the mayor's salary, along with the, all the department heads and city council members, and cut those by 10%, you have over $130,000 in savings. If you include two positions I feel that are non-essential paid to the mayor and the tele-assistive communication analyst in the police department, if you eliminate those positions, that's another approximate $140,000 in savings. Now you're talking about over $275,000 in savings. So by cut priority, when there's other areas, you can find this money. So, Director, we know what the solution is. Community development block grant funding, where we can receive up to $400,000 that we should not have be reallocated by this administration. And if need be, if the mayor cannot find any other way, we take the salary cuts and we eliminate positions that he created for the sake of local pages. Thank you.
Councilman Moore? Thank you, Council President. Director? We all cheer when you come into, to bring to the table. I will speak from my heart. And I would try to not repeat what other council members have said. Because who will be repeating, repeating, repeating? A couple of months ago, I think a month ago, Patterson was deemed the third worst city to live in the nation. And I'm rebattering whoever asks me out there what Patterson means for me. And it means a lot. Listen, I'm speaking from my heart. My kid was raised here. I got 30 years in the city of Patterson. Before sitting here, I was sitting here. I know there was a problem there, and I know there was a problem here. I can feel it, I can sense it, and I'm seeing it. Patterson is not the third worst city to live in inside our nation, it's not. But what we have to say today is that not the directors, not you, the director of recreation, not the director of the department, are the worst. We have the worst administration in the state of New Jersey. Because when you, when this governor tries, asks this administration, "Go to your homework, and then we will vote for someone for 10th lady" "that is there across the board, and then ignore our request, and cowardly go after recreation and singles for granted" "that is worse for me. It's totally worse for the administration." I don't sit here to sleep with nobody. I got voted in here by the people, by those that have the means, that don't really want me to represent them. And I didn't need to watch or learn, I didn't need to cut. Now, we're not talking about recreation only. We're talking about the whole department, DPW. We're talking about that department. They, 24 hours a day, are cleaning our street. We love the law enforcement. We love the Fire Department. We love other departments, of course we do. But when we talk about the core of this city, DPW Recreation, we're talking something serious. We don't necessarily send the wrong message. Yes, we want to work together. Now, a lot of people says here about churches can do this, about we could get the money, or we could just do this, do GoFundMe and respect the initiative that you have taken. But Patterson is not for sale. We need to tell the administration, "Do your work." "You was elected to do your work." Because if we start as churches, as community members, as other people could, a voting session, trying to take the burden of the responsibility of the administration, you know what they're gonna do tomorrow? They survive, they did it themselves. We don't need to do nothing. Let's go on and let's do what happens. So, we need to know, we need to roll house lead and tell the second floor, "This is serious." And I just heard today, tonight, that, and, and only the, uh, Council President through, we are for this area representing the administration, if it's true that they cast a national, officially?
Are you kidding me? Are you kidding?
I'm not aware of that, Council, and I'm not sure, but I'm asking. Can you tell somebody? All the gangs and Nazis, all that stuff, it was like... So, so another word is, "See where we at? See where we at? Now, now, I know that a lot of you is interested today. Everybody's out there probably looking at the message of the convention. But I had to take a flight back, back from Dominican Republic. And then he brought me another airport in Baltimore last night and told us 11 o'clock that I cannot travel by a flight back. And then put us on a bus from Baltimore here. And I arrived at 4:00 in the morning to be here for this meeting for you, because you were elected to represent you. Why they not here? Why the member is not here? Why the president of the legislature is not here? To answer to the public.
There's a lot, a lot there. But, um, I came back from Philadelphia myself, so I missed some good rain tonight. And I actually get ready for being here like this. The messages loud and clear, Councilman Jack, we can not ahead of the governor. Our governor is chasing Donald Trump all around the country. So we will never get any name from Chris Christie when it comes to the city of Patterson. But some Chris Christie, he's got reduced the funding, the funding formula. It would only get 6,000 students a minute. Our schools will be closed like Detroit, Philadelphia. So if you're expecting anything from Chris Christie, it will never happen. Now, when you talk about protecting our children, all you have to do as far as the conventions the last couple of days, it's hardship. If you look at the Republican, uh, convention, it's more or less where our kids did not have any type of, uh, protection when it came to their employment rates. These are the fights and things that the Trumps and the people want us to do. They have no respect for immigrants. They have no respects for our people of different religions such as Muslims. They have no respect for people in socioeconomic classes that do not match us. So the message that we're sending is, is really wrong to our young people. You think about, you guys have no protection. And, and you, you think about the, the fights that our people did as people of color, African-Americans, as, you know, make sure that we're covered when it comes to the rights of our employees. These employees have no coverage. So when you talk about grabbing the low-hanging fruit, not only that, you're sending a bad history message to them, that you're not covered. This is what, you know, Bernie Sanders think that's from about, this progressive movement. So hopefully the young requests, somebody, they come out now and vote in robes. Because they do have control over who sits in these seats, who sits in my seat, who sits in the governor's seat, who sits in the president's seat. So if this isn't a wake-up call for our young people, our councillors, then you should be spearheading the voter registration drive and not go mad at, well, you don't do nothing, no matter. I saw recently where there was a 21-year-old city councilman in somewhere, in Alabama or somewhere. So the message, if you really look at it, we as a community, and a community that is a majority and majority of, of people of color, you look at the history of labor, you look at the AIDS outbreak, you look at the Jaffa, you look at these people who have fought to make sure that our labor right even in Silk City. You know, we had children working, there were fights in their labor that we go through. And you would tell, send the message that they have no rights, so we're gonna let them go. This, this really think about where that message is going. It's almost a Donald Trump message. It really is. So you really gotta look at, like, the protection of our young people, the protection of our community, really educate them and keep them from becoming disenfranchised in the whole system. Because that's what happens. And that's, that's right right now. Like I said, one, one statement that I made roughly clear is, who's gonna get up at the next funeral and give a speech and explain why his baby was killed? By somebody who fought for a baby? Why somebody who fought for her baby? Because each time that we have these killings in our community, we know both sides. We usually know both sides, and my heart goes out to both sides. I've been on both sides, I've had friends and family. So you think about the message that's being sent. Councilman Martin, you're right, man, the numbers just don't add up. They don't add up, it doesn't add up. So I, I mean, I thank you, Council President, thank you again for taking my call, those people who are working on this, I'm actually headed back down to Philadelphia, and, and, and the, the message is loud and clear when it comes to like what's going on. Our young people's voices have to be heard, but the voiceless have to be represented by us.
Tell your name.
Okay. My name is Itzy. Hi, everyone on the news. Me and my uncle.